Good afternoon and thank you so much for joining us for our school board meeting here on today. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two amendments to the agenda. The consent agenda number three, I'd like to add this evening, the appointment of the principal of Morgan Fitzgerald, Ms. Ayesha Horthon, who's currently the assistant principal at Gibbs High School, and that's consent agenda number three. In addition, I've added a link to the facilities work program. The Department of Education did not release this document until after the publication of the book, so I placed a link in that, and that's consent agenda item number eight, which originally was number eight, but with the reordering of the numbers now is number nine. So that link is there for your review of the tentative facilities work program. Thank you.
Regarding amendments to today's agenda, I find good cause to amend the agenda as follows. First, a new consent agenda item number three was adopted, was added to appoint the principal of Morgan Fitzgerald Middle School. Second, an attachment has been added to former consent agenda item number eight, which is now item number nine. And third, all pre-existing agenda items are renumbered accordingly. Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Move approval is amended.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all so very much. We have our invocation today by Pastor Bob Scott from Peace Memorial Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, and an additional song that will be sung by our very own students from Lakewood High School. So if everyone could please stand. If we could have Ms. Pett right, if you're in the building, if you could come up and give us words of comfort, please.
She's not here.
She's not here either. Would you be opposed if I did it from the dais? Bow your heads with me, please. We thank you for our most marvelous day, but more importantly, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all the teachers, the students, and staff within the Pinellas County school system. We thank you for all that are gathered here on today, having education as the forefront of all that we think and do. We thank you for the community and its support of our schools throughout the district. We thank you for all of the legislation that's moved forward to support education in our students. We thank you for life, for health, and for strength. Most importantly, we just thank you for being you. We thank you for those who are on their way. We ask that safe traveling grace and mercy accompany them so that they are cared for while they make that journey. We also want to give a special thanks for our students because we know that they work extremely hard, and all that they're doing is so that they can truly be our future. Last but certainly not least, we thank you for the administration, and we thank you for all of the school board members that are present. We thank them for all that they do because we know that their decisions oftentimes are hard to make, but they make them with the best interest of the student, their families, and the entire district at heart and in their minds. These and all other blessings we ask, we ask that you guide over this meeting, allow it to serve for your purpose, so that all things run according to decency and in order. Let all those with hearts that are full say amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rachel Ryska, Liam James, and Alex Keshech. In our class, we do a lot of variety of genres of music and popular tunes, classical tunes, all kinds of different things, and part of our school year every year is writing our own compositions. So this is an original called Smooth Sailing.
Okay, ready? One, two, one, two, three, four.
Thank you so very much. I believe their principal is in the audience, Ms. Erin Savage. And Mr., yeah. And thank you again to Mr. Jacob Merritt's Strings of Sparta. Thank you so very much. Smooth Sailing, an original composition. Thank you all so very much. We now have a video that is extremely, extremely special to me and probably to a number of other persons. We want to celebrate an outstanding Lakewood High School graduate who overcame adversity to make his dreams come true in the NFL. So we want to go ahead and watch this fantastic surprise.
A congenital disorder led to the loss of his left hand at the young age of four. And while it's held him back, it hasn't prevented him from flourishing on the football field. Shaquem makes no excuses, but he felt the need to write a 15-page open letter to all NFL GMs to explain what he believes is his purpose.
I want people to know what I'm about and who I really am. And I think that was good for me because, you know, everybody see me, that guy who's always smiling and just keeping their head forward and working, but there's so much more behind it. You know, I've been through a lot of things, but I was able to overcome it.
Shaquem quieted some critics with one of the most impressive performances at the NFL Combine. He clocked a blistering 4.38 seconds in the 40-yard dash. And then with a specially-made grip, Shaquem outperformed many NFL prospects, bench pressing 225 pounds 20 times.
The feeling I had was, you know what, I got so many people watching me right now, I gotta make sure I push everything I got, and I wasn't gonna stop until I leave here. My arms is giving out.
Throughout his entire life, Shaquem has had to deal with detractors, people saying that he couldn't do this, he couldn't do that. His father's advice that he's lived by his entire life, nothing comes easy. And now Shaquem finds himself just a few weeks away from living out his lifelong dream, getting drafted into the NFL.
When somebody tell me I couldn't do something, it don't make me work that much harder to make sure I can prove them wrong, and then once I do it, and then if I didn't know you can do that, well, I did.
And is there any doubt in his mind that he belongs?
No doubt, no doubt at all. Not even, not even 0.1%.
In St. Petersburg, Kevin O'Donnell, Fox 13 Sports.
To become a pro football player, you need a few things: size, strength, speed, and until now, two hands.
I know what I can do, and I know my expectations, and I know my expectations for myself are high.
When the NFL Draft kicks off next week, Shaquem Griffin will make history. He's set to become the first player in league history with just one.
I would never thought that when I was younger, I would be at this point now, and I'm kinda glad that I made it here.
Why didn't you think that you would be here?
I mean, because I knew, no matter how good I did, no matter everything that, you know, I pushed for, there was gonna be some type of doubt, and some people wanna put limitations on what I can do. And I knew that because it happened in Little League, it happened in high school, it happened in college, and I knew each and every step and every phase of my life, there's gonna be some type of doubt that's gonna be like, you know what, this guy can't do this, but, you know, I think I've been doing pretty well with showing people what I really can do.
As an infant, Shaquem's left hand never properly developed.
It was so sensitive to touch, and, you know, obviously, you know, we were aggressive kids, we always used to bump it, or I'd get a cut on it, and it would just, I mean, extreme pain.
At four years old, his parents had it amputated, but that did not diminish his love for football. And his twin brother Shaquille never let him use it as an excuse. Shaquille is already an NFL standout, a cornerback for the Seattle Seahawks.
Did you treat him differently when you guys were little?
Oh, no. I had no reason to. I didn't see a brother with one hand. I just seen Shaquem Griffin, my twin brother.
Though Shaquem, didn't he have a built-in advantage because he had two heads?
I mean, he can, he can think that, and to, and to the competition start.
How does someone learn how to catch with one hand?
You don't get hit in the face a few times before you actually learn. I mean, it was a long time coming, but I did figure out a way.
The Griffin brothers took their sibling rivalry to the University of Central Florida, where Shaquem continued to defy the odds, becoming Defensive Player of the Year for his conference.
How proud of your brother are you?
Extremely proud. It's still kinda hard to explain and put into words, but no one really doesn't understand what he's been through, and I've been there every step of the way. So to see what he's been through and how he's overcome every single thing, he's a huge inspiration to me.
This performance inspired many. At the NFL Combine and audition for the pros, he ran the fastest sprint of any linebacker in history.
Your 40-time was the fastest of a linebacker since?
Combine being recorded.
Just wanted to make sure you knew.
Yeah, it's pretty fast.
Did, did you know going in that you were capable of that?
Oh, I knew it. He didn't believe it, but I knew it. I knew I was gonna run 4-3. I told him. He was like, yeah, he kinda bigger, so you're gonna run a 4-4. That's how he said, you're kinda far, far, you're a far, far guy, you're kinda big.
Do you think growing up without your left hand made you a better football player than you would've been?
Yeah, it's kinda funny. My brother said that before, too. It was like, I mean, I don't know, if you would've had two hands, I think you would've been lazy.
You considered a disability, a handicap?
Never. I mean, I don't like, I don't like hearing words like that. Because if you got a disability or a handicap, that means you're limited to certain things. And honestly, I'm limited to nothing. I can't do anything anybody else can do.
You getting sick of people talking about the one-handed football player?
Yeah, it gets, it gets tired, man. And that's what I'm here for, because I'm, I'm gonna put all that to rest. I mean, I'm not gonna stop until I do. I mean, one day, I'm gonna be called Shaquem Griffin, the football player, and not Shaquem Griffin, the, the one-hand wonder. I don't need that name. Just call me Shaquem Griffin, the football player, I'm good with that.
And I'm not sure if you saw that last slide, but he was in Times Square on the huge billboard, so I'm so excited. We are proud to report that Shaquem was drafted by the Seattle Seahawks and was a starting linebacker for Seattle's season opener this past Sunday. Shaquem's twin brother Shaquille also plays for the Seahawks. Congratulations to his mother, Ms. Tangi Griffin, his brother and teammate Shaquille Griffin, and the entire Griffin family, and to the Lakewood Spartans. And thank you to my colleagues and Dr. Greg Owen's staff for allowing me to, to ask for that to be shown because it's such an inspiration to students who have what we may say is a disability, but for them, it's just another part of their everyday life. So thank you so very much. Today is also a very somber day for us. Seventeen years ago today, our lives and our world changed. It's hard to believe that so much time has passed and that most of our students do not remember a time before September 11th. Today, we remember the nearly 3,000 Americans who lost their lives and the nearly 6,000 Americans who were injured on this day in 2001. We honor the firefighters, police officers, and emergency workers who worked tirelessly to save lives that day and every day. We say thank you and we appreciate you. To the survivors, families of those lost, and all Americans who were affected by the attempt, to shake our resolve, we still stand together as proud Americans. I'd like to share an excerpt from an essay written by Gabrielle Monforti, a sixth grader at Eastlake Middle School and this year's first-place winner of the Palm Harbor Fire Department's 9/11 Memorial Essay Contest. Quote, "On a day that was intended to harm and hurt the United States, people joined together. Firefighters and police officers ran to help save lives, and even strangers helped each other. It brought our nation together in a way that's never happened before. We were one. American flags were waved at every home, and we promised we would never forget. It left a legacy of hope. I will never forget the innocent people or the heroes that died that day, and its impact and legacy will live on with me." End quotes. Now we will have the introduction of professional and community organization representatives by Ms. Lisa M. Wolf, our information officer.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Greg Owen's staff, it is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, Kelly Parker. With the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Mike Gandolfo. Representing the Pinellas County Council of PTAs, Cindy Aaron Zeller. And with the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Jacob Merritt. A member of media in attendance today is Megan Reeves from the Tampa Bay Times. And today, we will have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibilities Committee. Please welcome, from Lakewood High School, Lauren Latimer and Paris Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Latimer, and I am a senior in the Center for Advanced Technologies at Lakewood High School. I've been attending Lakewood since my freshman year, and I feel as if over these past four years, like, our school does everything it can, it can academically to make sure that we're prepared for college, like, which will include us. Like, today, we have people from FAU, we have representatives for our question-and-answer series. Tomorrow, we're gonna have Jacksonville State there. We also get help every day, you can stay after school from 2:15 to 3:15, get tutoring, or you can get ACT/SAT prep. With that being included, like, our teachers, our teachers give up their whole lunch period sometimes for us, or like, after school, you can literally stay from 1:50 to like, 4:00 to understand a topic. So I feel as if, like, our school, it's like making an impact on us to making those kids who might not at first wanted to go to college, change their idea and their mindset to like, oh, now I wanna go to college because these people have given faith in me. My teachers have faith in me, even when I lost faith myself and I didn't know what I wanted to do. We also are big on community service. Our school, now, I have been helping with the Health Squad, which is partnered with Feeding Tampa Bay, as well as Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital. We're spearheading a pantry on campus, which will be including food, school supplies, as well as clothing, which makes us the first public school, well, first school in Pinellas County to have a food, a pantry like this, including all those various things. We're getting, weekly, every Friday, we'll give out bags full of food. This week, I wanna say, we put in 20 cans of milk, cereal, like, different snacks, all these different breakfast items for the families to go home with. So over the weekend, like, they wouldn't feel as if they wouldn't be able to eat because we feel as if, if we're able to have food, everyone in our community, our school family and our school community can have food, which include the teachers and all the other people there. We're also big on like, because I'm a cheerleader, sometimes we'll go out to Little League, help them cheer. We'll do different things like tutoring and all this other stuff for people in the community. So we know that the generations coming behind us will be able to get the opportunity that the school has been pouring, like, filling us with as well.
Good evening. My name is Paris Smith. I am a senior at Lakewood High School as well, in the Center for Advanced Technologies Program. And this evening, I'd like to go over the student life and the clubs and activities that we have at Lakewood High School. Beginning with student life, I feel that Lakewood has a way of bringing together students that I don't think many other schools have. And a good example of this would be peer-to-peer mentoring. It's something that we started our high school last year, and it's where upperclassmen, you know, juniors and seniors, would be helping out freshmen and sophomore with their academics, you know, checking in with them, just to kind of give them someone to sort of look up to. Because coming into high school as a freshman, you're kinda scared, all these big people, like, oh, you know, it rocks your boat. And so I feel like having that person to talk to and to, to guide you, is something that I can say that really impacts your student life at Lakewood. Moving on to clubs, FBLA is an amazing club to be a part of. I believe that our chapter, Lakewood High School's chapter, is the, one of the largest chapters, one of the largest FBLA chapters in the state of Florida, which is a pretty huge accomplishment. Clubs such as Key Club, it's a student-led organization. We have lots of volunteering and community service projects around the whole entire, like, St. Petersburg and Pinellas County area. Spanish Honor Society, it's where you get involved in Hispanic culture and things of that nature, and as well, going to Conferencia, which is a, I think, I consider it a statewide competition, where you go and have competitions, you have plays, speeches, and things of that nature, and just try and see who, who can be the most proficient in that language, and you can receive scholarships and trophies and just be rewarded for what you've accomplished there. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Before we leave, we also brought some of our school's newspapers. Even though it's the last edition, our new edition will be coming out in two weeks. This is the one from last, the last school year.
And also, the Spartan News, some of those writers help our Manatee News journalist over at Melrose Elementary School with the Journey to Journalism program. So I get to embarrass Lauren a little bit. I've known her since she was teeny weeny, and she's been a part of the speech-writing and essay contest that I've done for the month of February, Recognizing Black History Month, and she has been just a phenomenal young lady. So, hey. Thank you. Fabulous job. Thank you all so very much. Lakewood is on the move. And the principal is really doing a phenomenal job with all of the new construction that is disrupting everything over there. So thank you so very much. Real quick, a point of personal privilege, she's probably going to catch me when I walk out that door and do something to me, but today is Ms. Paula Texel's birthday. So happy birthday.
I'll see you.
Thank you all so very much. Moving on to our special order agenda, presentation of the proclamation designation. Do I have a motion? Do we have a presentation from staff, Dr. Greg Owen?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and to school board members, it gives me great privilege to introduce Michelle Anderson, who's a K-8 social studies specialist, and to present the proclamation designating September 15 through October 20 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Greg Owen's staff, good afternoon. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 to October 15 by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. The observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. It was enacted into law on August 17, 1988, on the approval of Public Law 10402. President George H.W. Bush issued the first proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month on September 14, 1989. The day of September 15 is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16 and 18, respectively. Also, Columbus Day, Orde de la Raza, which is October 12, falls within this 30-day period. Pinellas County Schools supports and promotes Hispanic Heritage Month. Our teachers have received curriculum support through a variety of means, including the Library of Congress, tolerance.org, and the National Education Association. We look forward to seeing our schools' cultures grow in support of all ethnic groups as they highlight the contributions and achievements of our Hispanic and Latino countrymen and women. Thank you for your support of this annual event.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah, she's gonna read it after, because I always forget. Ms. Lantino?
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. The proclamation reads, "Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 15, 2018, State of Florida, County of Pinellas. Proclamation by the Pinellas County School Board. Whereas our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people since its founding, with faith and passion, a sturdy work ethic, and profound devotion to family, Hispanics have helped carry forward our legacy as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all. Whether their ancestors have been here for generations, or they are among the newest members of our American family, they represent many countries and cultures, each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to our country's story. In celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor the contributions Hispanics have made throughout our history, and we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our communities strong. Whereas this month, let us reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success, and let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunity and building an ever-brieter future for all. Let us embrace the diversity that strengthens us and continue striving to ensure the American dream is within reach, within reach for generations of Hispanics to come. Whereas Congress has authorized and requested the President to issue annually a proclamation designating September 15 through October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now, therefore, we, the Pinellas County School Board, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2018, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Pinellas County Schools, and in doing so, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to recognize the contributions made and the important presence, presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States, and celebrate this heritage and culture."
Fabulous. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so very much, Ms. Lantino. Did you have your?
Does she need the light for? No.
Okay. Thank you so very much. For the next two items, we will be going down for those presentations.
Board members and visitors, I'm not gonna go down tonight because I have a cold and I don't wanna sneeze all over everybody, but I will congratulate you all from up here.
Would you wanna run this? Do you want me to? Who's that? Dr. Valerie Brim. So as the board members gather in front of the dais, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Valerie Brim, who will recognize, good evening, recognize the five school, five stars, excuse me, five-star school award recipients. Dr. Brim?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Greco and staff. The five-star award was created by the Commissioners, Community Involvement Council, and it is presented annually to those schools that have shown evidence of community involvement. In order to earn the five-star award, a school must show documentation that has demonstrated excellence according to the following required categories: business partnerships, family involvement, volunteerism, student community service, and school advisory council. This past five years, the schools took a new track in presenting their portfolios, documentations. So schools had to develop a unique PowerPoint to show off their school community engagement in all five categories. The five, the PowerPoint presentations are uploaded on their website, on their social media. The PCS News Journal website showcased their PowerPoint. And the Pinellas County Schools is constantly establishing partnerships and building relationships with our community and its families. So congratulations to the following schools. As we call you up, you will be receiving a certificate from the state, and Mrs. Robirch will be presenting it. Our first school is Bowder Elementary. Brook, I'm sorry, Brook Creek Elementary. Carwise Middle. Clearwater High School. Cypress Woods Elementary. Dunedin High School. Eastlake High School. Eastlake Middle School Academy of Engineering. Garrison Jones Elementary. Highland Lakes Elementary. Lila Davis Elementary. Marjorie Rollins Elementary. Melrose Elementary. Orange Grove Elementary. Osceola Fundamental. Palm Harbor Middle. Ridgecrest Elementary. Safety Harbor Middle School. Starkey Elementary. Sunset Hills. And our final school's Tarpon Springs Middle School. Dr. Greco, I also want to just make a quick announcement about the release of our Parent Academy Catalog. And that is on our website for our parent workshops, as well as our Resource Fair that will be coming up October the 13th.
Oh, thank you, thank you, as always. Thanks, how are you?
Dr. Brim, why don't you make that announcement again? There was a lot of noise.
Okay, I also want to make an announcement about the release of our fall Parent Academy Catalog. We've offering workshops for our families and parents, both face-to-face as well as webinar. And anyone that actually participates in our webinars will also receive the recordings. So we have parents that are signing up and registering for those webinars. We also want to announce in October, we're going to sponsor our first Pinellas County School District-wide Resource, Family and Community Resource Fair that will be held at Thurgood Marshall's on October the 13th from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. So we have at least 30 to 50 community agencies that will be out to support our families.
Thank you, Dr. Brim. Thank you very much. Board members, the last and final presentation this morning, this evening is the introduction of newly appointed administrators. This has been a long tradition of this school board, and I thank you for that, and so do our administrators. So as I call you and up here, please come up, shake the hands of the school board members, and then return to your seats. And so I'll start with Ms. Amy Lockhart, the Director of Accounting. Ms. Lockhart began her employment in the Sixth Judicial Circuit in 1993. She served as the Associate Vice President of Financial and Business Services at St. Petersburg College from 2016 until she was appointed as Director of Accounting effective July 25th. Ms. Lockhart earned a bachelor's degree in accounting, a master's degree in accountancy from the University of South Florida. Welcome. Ms. Nikita Reed, Director of School Transformation. Ms. Reed began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2016. She served as a principal at Melrose until she was appointed as Director of the School Transformation effective May 30th. Ms. Reed earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Harding University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of Mississippi. Congratulations, Ms. Reed. Ms. Elizabeth Beth Herrendine, Director of Strategic Communications. Beth began her employment with the city of St. Petersburg in 2001. She served as Vice President of Special Projects with the Edwards Group from 2013 until she was appointed to this director's position. Ms. Herndine earned her bachelor's degree in telecommunications with a minor in business administration from the University of Florida. Congratulations. Mr. Dennis Russo, Administrator of School Safety. Mr. Russo began his employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2001. He served as a grant-funded program specialist academic computing from 2017 until he was appointed as the Administrator of School Safety effective July 2nd. He earned his bachelor's degree in education from Ohio University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Mr. Russo, congratulations. Ms. Heather Peters, the Principal at Frontier Elementary School. Ms. Peters began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2016. She served as the Assistant Principal at Douglas Jamerson Elementary until she was appointed to the Principal of Frontier. She earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education at Mount Marty College, and a master's degree in leadership and reading and educational leadership from the University of Sioux Falls. Congratulations, Ms. Peters. Ms. Stephanie Woodford, Principal of Lakewood Elementary School. Ms. Woodford began her employment in education in 1990. She served as the Assistant Director of School Leadership in 2017 until she was appointed Principal at Lakewood effective this past July 2nd. Ms. Woodford earned her bachelor's degree and master's degree in elementary education from the University of Florida, and a specialist degree in ed leadership from Nova Southeastern. Ms. Woodford, congratulations. Ms. Danica Jones, Principal at Melrose Elementary School. Ms. Jones began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2004. She served as Assistant Principal at Melrose Elementary from 2017 until she was appointed as Principal at Melrose Elementary effective June 13th of 2018. Ms. Jones earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education at St. Petersburg College, and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of West Florida. Ms. Jones, congratulations. Ms. Laura Cranzel, Principal at Perkins Elementary School. Ms. Cranzel began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2001. She served as the Assistant Principal/ Coordinator of Magnet Programs at Perkins from 2008 until she was appointed Principal at Perkins effective July 2nd. Ms. Cranzel earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of South Florida. Congratulations, Laura. Ms. Vicky Graham, Principal of Ridgecrest Elementary School. Ms. Graham began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 1994. She served as the Assistant Principal of Woodlawn Elementary School from 2013 until she was appointed to Principal of Ridgecrest effective July 2nd. She earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Florida A&amp;M University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Ms. Graham, congratulations. Ms. Mary Jane Lucas, Principal of Seminole High School. Ms. Lucas began her employment at Pinellas County Schools in 1993. She served as the Assistant Principal of Seminole High from 2015 until she was appointed as Principal effective this past July 2nd. Ms. Lucas earned her bachelor's degree in music education at Temple University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of South Florida. Ms. Lucas, congratulations. Ms. Holly Oaks, Principal of Tarpon Springs Fundamental Elementary School. Ms. Oaks began her employment in education in Pasco County. She served as the Assistant Principal at Dunedin High from 2016 until she was appointed as Principal of Tarpon Springs Fundamental Elementary this past July 2nd. Ms. Oaks earned her bachelor's degree in mass communications and a master's in ed leadership from the University of South Florida. Congratulations, Ms. Oaks. Ms. Jody Mattingly, Assistant Director of Community Schools. Ms. Mattingly began her education career in Broward County in 2006. She served as a classroom teacher there and also in Denver as an Assistant Principal and District Manager in language, English language acquisition in Denver from 2014 until she was appointed as the Assistant Director of Community Schools effective this past June 27th. She earned a degree in history from the Metropolitan State University, and a master's degree in curriculum instruction, multicultural literacy from Florida Atlantic University, and in ed leadership and policy studies from the University of Denver. Congratulations, Ms. Mattingly. Mr. Robert Gagnon, Assistant Director of School Leadership. He began his career in Pinellas County Schools in 2016. He served as the Assistant Principal at Northeast High School and administrator on special assignment until he was appointed to the Assistant Director's position. Mr. Gagnon earned his bachelor's degree in history from Southern Connecticut University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from Barry University. Congratulations, Mr. Gagnon. Mr. Ryan Stern, ESE Specialist for High Schools. Mr. Stern began his educational career in 2006 in Lafayette, Indiana. He served as a district resource teacher of exceptional student education in Hillsborough County until he was appointed to the specialist position here in Pinellas effective this past July 25th. Mr. Stern earned his bachelor's degree in special education with severe disabilities from Purdue University, and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of South Florida. Congratulations. Mr. Crowley Baird, ESE Specialist in pre-K through kindergarten. Began his employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2010. He served as an instructional staff developer in early childhood education from 2015 until he was appointed to the ESE Specialist Position effective this past July 25th. Mr. Baird earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Lindsay Wilson College, and a master's in special education from Campbellville University, and ed leadership from Eastern Kentucky University. Congratulations. And finally, last but certainly not least, Lisa DiPaolo, Managing Officer of Prevention. Ms. DiPaolo began her employment in Pinellas County Schools in 2004. She served as a manager of FACEIT program from 2013 until she was appointed to Manager Officer of Prevention effective this past August 1st. Ms. DiPaolo earned bachelor's degree and master's degree in social work from Adelphi University, and a master's degree in educational leadership from National Lewis University. Congratulations, Ms. DiPaolo. Board members, I know that was a lot because it's the first meeting basically as we gather and all of the appointments that we've done since last spring. So thank you very much for indulging and welcoming our administrators. That concludes the presentation.
I just want to make one slight comment. We do have a time-certain budget hearing item at 6:30. So if we are getting to that time, I'm not sure of how many speakers that we have, but if we get to that time, I will go ahead and recess the meeting so that we can then move on to our budget hearing and continue on accordingly. Likewise, we have a consent agenda item that is married to what will occur in our budget hearing. That's item number nine. So again, if we do not get to the approval of the consent agenda, and it is close to 6:30, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and move that one item, number nine, and work on that one to move that through, because we need to take care of consent agenda item number nine prior to starting the budget hearing. So I just wanted to share that information so that everyone would be aware. All right? Thank you all again so much for being very patient with our recommendations. All right, so moving on to public comments on agenda items, items on the agenda.
Board members and Dr. Greco, we have two speakers this evening for specific agenda items. We have Ray Hadorsky for non-consent number five, and Mike Gandolfo for non-consent number five.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Greco and staff. On behalf of the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association and the Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, it's my pleasure to be able to speak to you and provide you with a viewpoint of a vast majority of your employees. I encourage this board to vote in favor of approving the recommendation before you, the move to ETNA as the Health Plan Administrator for Pinellas County Schools. As a member of the Employee Well-being and Satisfaction Committee, I would tell you that the employees have had input into this process. We are very much in favor of this change in administrators. The lower overall pharmacy costs, the fact that there will be minimal disruption, greater access to primary physicians, and not having to have referrals for specialists were very much tractors to the EWBS Committee, as was the district's commitment to onsite support for employee assistance, and of course, the overall cost savings. We commend the district and April Paul, who heads the Risk Management Department, for actively seeking alternatives that would help manage the increasing rise in healthcare costs that plague the entire nation. I would also like to thank Paula Texel and CFO Kevin Smith and their teams for their work to make this deal happen. One of the largest selling points of working in Pinellas County Schools in a time when Florida is short thousands of teachers and those that find themselves in the job market are in such high demand is that Pinellas offers one of the top benefit packages in the state. This is a good business practice that keeps us competitive with surrounding districts. I urge this board to vote in favor of the motion to approve the recommendation before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gandolfo. Thank you, Mr. Gandolfo.[598.04][598.04](pause)
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Gregor and staff. My name is Ray Hidorsky and I'm the director of account management for Humana's North Florida Market. On behalf of Humana, I have been asked to share a few comments about the recommendation forwarded to the board to move to a new vendor for third-party health benefit administration insurance services. Aon was chosen by the school board to conduct the procurement of the third-party administrative services. In this role, Aon acted on behalf of the school board and not just in an advisory position. They issued two ITNs, one for medical and one for pharmacy, to which Humana and others replied. Although, as initiated, it appeared to be a competitive solicitation, it now is being referred to as a direct negotiation with only one awarded contract pending, not the two ITNs that were originally issued. Either way, the process has been conducted behind closed doors without any public scrutiny, without maintaining public records, without a scoring committee, without public negotiations with interested vendors. Under the sunshine law, when a committee or consultant is acting on behalf of a public body, it must comply with all the laws applicable to the public body, in particular, open public meeting and public records. We believe it's important to note that in previous experiences, the school board has conducted procurement utilizing a traditional public transparent process. We do not understand why this procurement was not conducted, was conducted differently. We believe that the public transparent process could avoid several of the challenges we have seen with this closed-door process. Based on the limited feedback we've received to date, it appears that the decision to select Aetna is based largely on cost savings. However, for two different reasons, we find it difficult to confirm that this was conducted fairly and that Aetna will be able to provide an overall better value over Humana. First, after being notified that PCS would be negotiating with Aetna and only after Humana placed several inquiries to Aon and Pinellas County Schools attorney, we were asked if we'd be open to negotiating. We believe the school board should be aware that when we were given the opportunity to revise our proposal in meetings with Aon on 7/16 and 8/1, we did in fact alter our initial proposal, substantially negating some of the cost issues and addressed the areas that Aon had brought to our attention as those concerns. We never received a response to our proposal revision until we sought one, and our offer is still being reflected in the recommendation before you as our original offer, not reflecting any of those changes. Second, based on knowledge of the market and having recently competitively winning Hillsborough County Public Schools ITN earlier this year, where our overall cost and value were superior to our competitors, specifically Aetna, we find it difficult to determine how the cost savings comparisons were made without public available scoring metrics. However, our experience leads us to believe that Humana would have an advantage. We stand ready to continue to negotiate and ensure that Pinellas receives the best service at the best price for its employees, their families, and the taxpayers of Pinellas County. That's all Humana's interest is, is to making sure that it's truly the best value. Humana requests that the school board review the process and procedures used on behalf of the school board, reject the recommendation to move forward, and procure the services needed through a traditional public ITN process that is transparent to the public. Thank you.[800.38][800.38](end of transcript)
That's the last speaker? Ms. Lantino?
Yes, I had a comment on the non-consent item number two. Are we finished with number five?
We haven't gotten, we haven't gotten, we're not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
That was just a public comment. We're, we'll get it through. Let me ask you, would you like to pull number five?
No, it's number two.
Number two?
Yeah.
Non-consent. I'm sorry, I thought she said consent. Please, I do apologize. So, when we get to the, that agenda, then we'll make sure we have you in there. Was that our last speaker? Okay, thank you so very much. Moving on to unfinished business, public hearing to consider the amendment, the policy 2460, exceptional student education.
Is it approved? Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Presentation?
Yes, I'd just like to ask Mr. Kupersky to make some brief comments about this. This is the second reading, and as you see in your notes, there's been those changes with the first. I think for the public's sake, we should maybe review it. Thank you, Mr. Kupersky.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Gregor, Madam Chair, board members. What you have in front of you is a public hearing for school board policy change to the exceptional student education policies and procedures, commonly known as the SP&amp;P. There are several changes in the document. Most of them relate to providing ESE students with greater rights than existed before. For example, students who are out of state, who are identified as gifted under their former state's laws, when they transfer to Florida, they will automatically be deemed eligible as gifted, whereas prior, you had to go through that identification and eligibility process. In addition, ESE students in DJJ programs previously were just served under, on a consultation basis, but now it's made clear that in accordance with federal law, that the team should look at their individual needs and provide whatever services consultative or otherwise that are needed for that student to progress in their curriculum. So, a couple of other legislative updates, but generally, you see this document once a year because there are changes. The board has to approve it, and it has also come as approved by the Florida State Board of Education. Thank you. Madam Chair, I would also note, since this is a public hearing, we should ask for any speakers on this.
Yes, certainly. Certainly. Do we have any speakers, Ms.?
Board members and Dr. Gregor, there are no speakers for this item.
Thank you. Ms. Lantino, I see your light. Is that still for the non-consent?
Two, non-consent two.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't leave you out. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Is it approved? Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to non-consent, starting with non-consent item number one, request approval of the 2018-2019 district strategic plan.
Is it approved? Second.
Presentation?
Yes, Madam Chair and school board members, this is always a pleasurable journey. I left two copies, as I see Ms. Dull is here, Jennifer Dull, to talk a little bit about this, but the two are because, one, and when we talked about this in the workshop, we really expanded some of the initiatives that we were doing in our school district for the general public to really understand some of the strategic initiatives such as elevating excellence and bridging the achievement gap and so forth. So, once, and hopefully, this document is approved, as you know, for the last five, six years, we've been attaching this to our budget, and so the strategic plan and the budget are connected and is the way it should be. And I want to thank the board for your support of this. We started this work back in the first part of June. This board, and I think it's important to the general public to know that this board reviewed this and provided input in June, again in July, again, you know, as we proceed to the final hearing this evening. So, Ms. Dull, if you could go over some of the details of this and just to provide for the public. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Dr. Gregor and board members, staff, and most importantly, community. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present our district strategic plan for 2018-19. Our district strategic plan is grounded in our mission, vision, and core values, and we review this every year and throughout the summer to make sure we're updating it for the new school year, but we do that in alignment with the budget and with school improvement plans to make sure that there's alignment and that students are at the center of all of our work and our goals for the upcoming year. Some of the highlights from our 1718 plan include district demonstrated a seven percent increase in, seven percentage point, not just a seven percent increase for middle school acceleration and a five percentage increase in the college and career readiness components of our district grade. And we continue to have a rising graduation rate, including a 13.7 percentage point increase for English language learners. Students with disabilities increased by 8.7 percentage points last year and exceeded the state average, and our Hispanic students grew nearly six percentage points and also closed the gap between all the other students for all students in the district. Our career and technical course industry certifications have increased, and I'm going to say this because people are going to think it's wrong, 586% since 2012. So, and that is a result of having goals and pushing the work to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to support students. And our advanced placement participation has grown each year, not just in number of students and number of exams taken, but also in the number of exams that have received qualifying scores of three, four, or five. Since 2013, we have seen a 50.7% increase in the number of passing or qualifying exam scores here in Pinellas County Schools. So, as you can tell, the district strategic plan is a dynamic document, and we review it every single year with input from the board, as Dr. Gregor mentioned, in our June and July workshops, as well as iterative feedback from staff, from school leaders, and from stakeholder groups throughout the year. Our goals this year are aggressive to continue our trajectory for improvement. Updates to metrics, often sometimes the goals say the same, but we keep pushing ourselves for increases in our metrics. You will also notice this year in the goals, disaggregation or specific goals for subgroups that are outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, specifically for English language learners, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. You will also see, as Dr. Gregor mentioned in the larger document, some outlines of our strategic initiatives so that we can share with the public and with staff some of the initiatives that are wrapped around some of these individual goals, but oftentimes, these strategic initiatives incorporate multiple goals and multiple groups coming together to work, and those are our focus instructional model, school safety, restorative practices, elevating excellence, and our personalized learning platform. So, as evidenced in our highlights from last year and in what we, what I just kind of went through tonight, it is my pleasure to bring this forward for board approval.
Thank you, Ms. Dull.
Thank you. I have a comment. Yeah, I'm curious, didn't we have a graph, a card that was like a fold-over card from last year, and it had a graph from 2008, and it showed how we progressive went down and then we came back up?
I think, if I'm remembering correctly, from the workshop, that was with our legislative platform.
Oh, okay. Oh, the legislative platform. Once everybody gets all together and decides what they want to ask for money-wise.
That graph was related to the state, the state planning.
Will that be coming out soon?
I believe.
In January or February?
We'll be discussing it the next workshop.
Okay. And it'll be shortly after that. Okay, then, are we going to have any oversight about restorative practice in our schools? Elementary, middle, and high schools, are we going to have any oversight? Anybody coming in, watching how that's going?
So, I think each one of our action goals actually has a full action plan that goes with it and a monitoring process from the district lens to make sure that as we move to systemic, and so this is for all goals, not just to question around restorative practices. So, each one of these goals has an action plan and a quarterly monitoring process that goes along with each action goal.
Okay, and do we have a schedule for that, for coming out in elementary, middle, and high schools? Is there a schedule that's going to be happening for the leaders of those schools to be watching?
I can follow up with that and get back with the board.
Okay, good. I appreciate that.
And for the board's notice, tomorrow, we have actually a community meeting with IRB, who will be coming down into Pinellas County, and Ms. Patricia Wright will, is, yeah, she is there now.
She's in the back, yeah, from eight, starting at eight.
Yeah, starting at eight at Pinellas Technical College, St. Pete. So, that's an opportunity to really communicate to the general community what we're doing with restorative practices.
So, is that on our calendar, the school board calendar?
I believe so.
Not on there.
It was, it was limited, if I'm not mistaken, it was limited space. Ms. Wright, I don't know if you want to speak to it, and there were invitations sent out so that persons who may have attended the sessions before when those individuals were here, it wouldn't be the same group because we have so many people that are interested. So, we tried to make sure that there were new people who are interested that they could attend because it's for the community.
It's for the community.
Yeah.
So, that's parents and grandparents?
I'm going to let Ms. Wright.
It is a community meeting that is a continuation of the community meetings that we've been having quarterly. In addition to that, though, we added various representatives throughout the district so that as we share the restorative practices story, we can get it out to different folks who might not have veiled themselves of the knowledge or may not be aware. And so, really, it's just an overview of what we've been doing, what restorative practices is, and gives people an opportunity to engage at a relatively shallow end, but yet to get an idea of what it's about.
Okay, sounds good. You know, I was also considering or thinking about, you know, children that have certain difficulties in schools, when they come to their rec centers at the end of the day, maybe some of those behaviors are, you know, starting to show out, and maybe some of those counselors or people that are in those recreation centers can deal with those behavior issues or pulling a circle or something like that. I think that would be kind of, I don't know what purview that would be in, but that would be a St. Petersburg rec center.
Certainly. Right now, we are in the implementation stages with instructional staff. However, we expect and we are going to expand it, and we have representatives from R-Club, YMCA, juvenile welfare board, so the knowledge will get out there, and eventually, it will spread and will permeate and will impact.
All right. We have a big district, so thank you for that.
Ms. Larna, do you have comments on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to say that this is detailed, but it's detailed so that we can really see what the strategic plan is, but if you go to the superintendent's office, board members, there are many, many notebooks with all the implementation information. I think this is really sufficient for the most part, but in there is all the implementation, and certainly at any workshop, and we've, you know, I'm glad you brought up about restorative practices, but we've had regular updates about that, and I'm sure that we still will. So, thank you.
So, thank you so very much for stepping in and felling out big pair of shoes. Thank you. Request approval for 2018-2019 school improvement plans. Do we have a motion with a second, and then we'll have a presentation?
Is it approved? Second.
Okay, presentation then questions.
If you'd like to.
Presentation and questions.
Whatever you'd like.
Presentation and then questions, because you may answer a question, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. It is also my pleasure to bring forward the school improvement plans. I think it definitely demonstrates great alignment with our resources to our district plan and also to what happens in schools. This process and development of implementation plans is done through a school team, and this year, we, we made sure that our document was definitely aligned to the FL, the Florida Department of Education core parts of it, but we redesigned this year to ensure that we were aligned with the work of the district, specifically really looking at alignment to what we are asking schools to do every day through our district strategic plan, like the focused instructional model, like restorative practices, and aligning the document in a way that laid out a plan, that aligned to the work that we're asking teachers to do, and aligning it to what we're asking rather than just being a compliance document for, for sake of having one. The other part of it is that school teams thoughtfully engage in the development of academic subgroup goals, climate, and healthy school goals based on their individual data and their needs for growth. The improvement plans are delineated to show current progress, where they are, and then problem solve through strategies, action goals, action plans, and a monitoring plan for each individual school around how they will progress throughout the year. Implementation in progress monitoring review happens both at the school and the district level on school improvement plans, and but as working documents, these plans can be adjusted throughout the year. So, if a strategy is really going well, they can heighten that strategy. If a strategy is not working, they can stop as a team and say, we need to do something to readjust. All plans can currently be viewed online on our district webpage, and once approved, they will be pushed out to school webpages so that students, families, staff can see the individual school improvement plan without going to our district website. As an aside, it was one of my greatest pleasures in my first year here on the job to really work with our school teams and our district teams and get to know them as we went through the school improvement planning process, and as our schools continue to demonstrate improvement in many areas, and it's with this in mind that I bring the school improvement plans for 2018-19 for your approval tonight.
Ms. Lantino?
Yes. I recently received the Pinellas County Schools tiered levels of support. We have 25 schools that have been designated as underperforming schools in English language arts. We have four in tier, we have six schools in tier four, we have seven schools in tier three, and we have 12 schools in tier two. There's, I think, one or two, two middle schools in tier two, and in tier three, there are elementary, and then, and one middle school, and then tier four, those six schools are elementary schools. So, how are we going to be able to make sure these children in early elementary schools and also Azalea Middle School, as I've been told, some of those children are reading at a fourth and a fifth grade level over there?
How are we going to be able to really support the children that need the help the most? North County, Mid County, South County, no matter where they are? How are we going to be able to flesh out the plan that you have to support the children that need the help the most? Now, I imagine all these schools are Title I schools, but how are we going to continue to give them additional support? You know, I think early elementary school is very critical. On Friday, I was over at Happy Workers. I'm going to be volunteering there one day a week. And, you know, seeing how supportive those children are getting those lessons taught. And they usually do play learning, is what they're calling it now from the Department of Education. So when they get into kindergarten, first and second, by the time they're in third grade, if they're not engaged in reading, because we keep pushing them forward, pushing them forward, what's going to happen to that child when they're in third grade? Are we going to get additional support? Are we going to get additional people? Are we going to be hiring additional people? Or are these supports that you've just mentioned, that, you know, you're very happy that you've looked at those closely? Is that something different? Are you going to be doing Jan Richardson? Or what else are you going to be doing to support these children that need the support the most?
Would that response be better coming from someone from teaching and learning and those components versus?
So I can speak to how that comes forward in a school improvement plan. So each school looks at the specific subject area and really makes a goal based on their data. So if they look at their data and say it's around, you know, the lower 25, and they need to make plans around that, they put those plans in place. Then, teaching and learning staff, along with the area superintendents, when they meet with that school and provide the support, like the actual integration of the plans that manifest at the school and how the school and students experience it. However, that's how the school improvement plan brings it together. It's looking at where they are in each different content area, and what are the supports programs that they- and then how does district office support this?
So will that be the teacher directly? Or will that be a Title I teacher? Or an additional paraprofessional? Or somebody that's coming in from, you know, the Title I office or someplace?
It would depend on-
It's the whole school.
Yeah, it would depend on the school, how they wrote the plan and the supports that come together through consultation, not only with the school leaders and the school teams, but also with the supports they receive from their levels in teaching and learning and through their area superintendents as well. So-
I think Mr. Hendrick is creeping behind you. But one of the things I want the board to know is that a one-size-fits-all doesn't work. And so, one of the benefits of having individualized instructional plans of the schools is for the school themselves, the leadership, the staff, to analyze, as Ms. Dull was talking about, analyze, so where are we? What do we really need here? If you need additional training for Jan Richardson, let's go obtain that training. In one school, it doesn't mean you need it for all schools. The tiered supports that we do voluntarily here, and many of those schools are on the verge of being B-plus schools, we still feel like we need to continue to provide those supports. Listed below those tiers, Ms. Lantino and to the board we shared with, are those the extra time of planning, the extra time of staff development or professional development, the extra powers, the extra, you know, under each of those tiers? So we could certainly kind of review that and go over that. And it goes higher. The tiered three is the greatest amount of support. The tiered two are basically C-plus schools. It's just that we want to bring some level of supervision or support to them. It's all about support. Mr. Hendrick?
And one-
Right, but I have an indication under here, under each one of these, you know, blocks, co-teacher, co-teacher, co-teacher. So how are those co-teachers going to be utilized in the classroom? I mean, do we have that figured out yet? Or is that going to be yet to come in a couple of weeks?
So as it relates to the tiers of support, we did present that at the board workshop, I believe, in August, and went through in each tier specifically what the additional things are. Dr. Grego mentioned many of them. One of them are co-teachers. Some of those are teachers in training. Some are paraprofessionals. These schools also had the choice, if they wanted an additional reading intervention teacher, or if they wanted three paraprofessionals specifically for reading. When it comes to how those teachers are allocated and to which groups are they working with, and how many times a day, and which materials are they using? Those are definitely school-based decisions. With our input and support, we provide, here are the adopted materials. But in some cases, we use non-adopted materials. All of the schools in tier three and tier four are, of course, under the supervision of the Transformation Zone Director, Mrs. Reed. And they have made decisions with our support for differentiated reading materials at those schools. If you're talking about a specific situation, how we're doing, I'd be happy to come back to the board workshop and discuss that.
Okay.
But the biggest thing that was mentioned, but I want to say it again, is extended time, not only for the students, but for teachers. There's additional paid planning for teachers in all those schools as well. Happy to come to the board workshop with that.
The reference, the term, the co-teacher, and that was one of the questions I had at the workshop. I thought a co-teacher was a certified teacher. But then, as it was explained to me, it wasn't really a certified. It was a, I don't know what it was. But I asked, I forwarded my request to, I think, Ms. Texel. And we have to have a meeting and talk about that because I think we need to have maybe somebody that's a little more experienced, rather than a co-teacher.
We'll be happy to do that at the workshop and even show you which ones are reading endorsed and things like that.
Yeah, that would be important, reading endorsed teacher. Good. Thank you.
I also just want to remind the board that some time ago, we gave the principals the authority, if you will, to build their structural tree as it relates to the services. So they have the basic instruction, but they can add to that tree, if you will, whatever it is that they feel they need in order for their school to be successful in any additional supports. Likewise, when I went to Orlando with the superintendent and we were presenting on our plan to assist the schools that needed some additional support, please keep in mind that, once your school has made a certain grade, the state wants to pull back those supports. But we have made a conscious effort to say, "We're not going to do that." Just because that school has excelled to a C, we don't want to pull those supports away. We want to continue that support so that they can continue to move forward. So they will still be listed under one of those tiers as having those additional supports, even though their grade, their school grade may not necessarily demand that. We say, "We want to do that so that they can continue moving forward." Because we want them to be successful and get-
Yeah, right. I was just asking for a clarification.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify that the co-teachers that we allocated in the tier two, three, and four are certified teachers. And they were specifically given as extra teachers for the principal and the school-based leadership team to use as they see fit to meet the needs of the students at each school.
But they don't get medical insurance or anything, right?
Some of them that we allocated came from the substitute pool, and they've remained as substitutes. And some of them, we allocated as full benefit certified teachers. It's a differentiated model based on the needs of each school.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. That was the presentation. We had a motion with a second as it relates to the passage of item number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so very much. That was good discussion and good update and dialogue. Item number three, setting a public hearing and authorizing the advertisement of the public hearing to consider the amendment to policy 2250. Dr. Grego?
Yes, board members, the-
Is there a second?
Just, board members, the district application program is one of the heart, kind of the heartbeat of our district. Included in there are magnet programs, career academies, and so forth. I want to ask Mr. Bill Lawrence and also Ellen Truskowski to come forward. And this is our first reading. We went over this extensively at our workshop. And I think it's important for the public to know that this board truly reviewed page by page, line by line, some of the changes. So, Mr. Lawrence, if you could give a brief overview?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairwoman Flowers, board members, Dr. Grego and staff. This is indeed the setting of the public hearing and the first reading of the district application program procedures, which are incorporated by reference into policy 2250. We did review these changes at the August 14th board workshop, as Dr. Grego indicated. Ms. Truskowski is our district application program specialist. And I want to introduce her and compliment her on her efforts and terrific work in working with all of our stakeholders, students, parents, teachers, staff, and our community at large on this document. You'll see that it addresses a complete reorganization to make it far more user-friendly. And that includes a detailed table of contents with links to those sections of the document. The most exciting inclusion in this year's update is, are the creation of two new magnet programs for the 2019-2020 school year. First is the new conservatory for the arts at Sandy Lane Elementary, which will provide a new visual and performing arts magnet program in the northern part of Pinellas County, and provide a feeder pattern for those students to matriculate into the Leadership Conservatory for the Arts at Tarpon Springs Middle School. The second new program will be a new elementary center for gifted studies on the site of the former Palm Harbor Elementary School. And that program will be our third elementary gifted center, having now a line one in southern part of the county, the middle part of the county, and the north part of the county. This new gifted center at the yet-to-be-named former Palm Harbor Elementary School will feed into the middle school gifted center at Dunedin Highland Middle School. Other than that, as I indicated, we do some technical revisions every year. But the bulk of what Ms. Truskowski has done for us this year is really organize the document so it's far more user-friendly. And I think that just about covers it. We're here if you have any questions.
Ms. Lantino, is that a light for questions? Or from before? Any questions, concerns? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's just our first reading, so we'll have our second reading scheduled.
I too want to share with the board my thanks for Ms. Truskowski, who's come on board and done a dynamite job of reaching out to the community. This is the district application, and reaching out to parents and principals and teachers. So this document reflects that work. And thank you so much for the attention and detail. Thank you.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the request for approval for the five-year contract for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, North Pinellas. Do we have a motion with a second? Is there a second? Okay, presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair and school board members, this, you know, we went through the approval of the application. And then, this is the contract. Typically, Rick Wolf would be here. But Rick is actually, just for your point of knowledge, up in Escambia County, testifying with the management company that was overseeing Windsor, the New Point Educational Partners. And so, as you can probably read from some of the work that's being done, people are having to pay some consequences and sometimes jail time for the misappropriations of funds. So that's where Mr. Wolf is. And I'm happy to introduce Amy Hayes, who's the senior coordinator of this. So, Amy, my pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Grego. On May 8th, we approved the High Performing Charter replication for St. Pete Collegiate, North Pinellas. And they plan to begin operations in August of the 1920 school year. This is a recommendation for a five-year contract. And we utilize the standard Florida model contract. There were a few points of negotiation, primarily the concern raised during the application period, which regarding the enrollment preferences, those enrollment preferences included in the contract are those allowed by law. And they do include children of employees of the charter school as well as the governing board members. However, the contract does specifically state that children of employees of St. Petersburg College will not be entitled to such preferences. The only other point of negotiation is the location. Originally, it was slated for the Clearwater-St. Petersburg College location. However, the cost for renovation was prohibitive. So they have moved that to the Tarpon campus. So this is the request for that five-year contract.
So what are they going to call it?
Thank you.
Do you have a motion with a second? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And number five, request approval of- ETNA for administrative health insurance plan, including the flexible spending plan and count and wellness program. Do we have a motion with a second? Is there a second? Presentation, please.
Yes, Madam Chair and board members, I'd like to call upon Paula Texel and April Paul to present this request. And I know we have Aon also in the audience, too. So, Ms. Texel?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Grego and staff. April Paul, Director of Risk Management, and I are here tonight on behalf of our district team as well as the members of our Employee Wellbeing and Satisfaction Committee as we request approval of ETNA as the administrator of our health insurance plan. In attendance tonight, representing, I just want to do a couple of introductions. Representing Aon is Lori Penley, our Account Executive Vice President; Susan Grimm, Project Manager, Assistant Vice President. Assistant Vice President, you can give them a wave so they know who you are, Amanda Burke Cross, Lead Actuary, Assistant Vice President, Christina Jackson, Actuary, Senior Consultant, and Leslie Vianz, our Consultant. Also in attendance tonight, representing Etna, is Kathy Agary, Market Head, Public and Labor Division, Mike Driscoll, Sales Vice President for Public and Labor Florida, and Robert Jose, Counsel for Foley and Lardner LLP. Pinellas County Schools, as you know, moved to being self-insured three years ago. That was January of 2016. And at that time, it was important for us to have consistency in our provider through that transition. The plan has done well, and we are seeing good results from being self-insured. We're always monitoring our plan, however, to make sure that we are providing our employees with a complete program in the most cost-effective manner. Aon serves as our broker and benefits consultant. They represent many of the public school districts in the state of Florida, including Miami-Dade, Hillsborough, Volusia, Saroceta, Manatee, and Escambia Counties. Aon has a longstanding relationship with Pinellas County Schools. They have the resources, expertise, and local presence to successfully market, negotiate, and manage our district's health and benefits program, in addition to providing actuarial services, claims analysis, and assist with governmental reporting required for our health plan. Earlier this year, Aon marketed our self-insured administrator arrangement. Factors such as system capabilities, the overall provider network, wellness program opportunities, pharmacy benefits, and medical providers were reviewed. Aon has invested $400 million in data and analytic solutions. They provide their clients access to their proprietary vendor and pharmacy national database and predictive modeling technology. The district was able to review this proprietary information, including provider and pharmacy discounts, drill down to our service area in Pinellas County. This information was considered along with other financial aspects and modeling for our future health plan costs and vendor selection. After reviewing information from four different major carriers, having discussions with the carriers on what was proposed, and then conducting direct negotiations, we are recommending to the board Etna as the administrator for Health, FSA, and Wellness. I wanted to take a few moments to share with you what this transition to Etna will mean for our employees. There will be a 99% match for employees, physicians, and hospitals. Employees will continue to be able to select from three plan options similar to our current plan. In the area of pharmacy, there will be an open formulary, which means that there are no drug exclusions. The pharmacy network includes all the major retailers. We will have the same co-pay and deductible structure on the pharmacy benefit. Almost 45% of our members will see a reduction in their co-pay level, and 45% will remain at the same level. Etna is also offering lower administrative costs. The savings will be approximately $700,000 per year with that flat rate guarantee for years one to three. We will continue to have, as mentioned before from Mr. Gandolfo, an onsite dedicated support here at the administration building for claims and medical assistance, which I know our employees truly depend on when they need some assistance with their medical issues. The wellness credit, which will also continue for employees during 2019, so if our employees melt that silver status by August 31st of this year, they will continue to receive that credit for 2019. And we will have the opportunity in the future to consider other programs Etna offers, which would complement our current plan design. Based upon the change of administrators to Etna, we have been able to reduce the expected increase of 9.3% down to 4.5%, a savings of approximately $6 million. Our risk management team will be working closely and frequently with Aon, Etna, our TIS department, other departments in our district, so that we can provide a smooth transition during the short window. We will be getting ready for annual enrollment in October, which will involve our active employees, our retirees, and COBA participants. Board members, we shared further details regarding this recommendation with you at the recent August 24th board workshop, but I am pleased to be able to share this information with our employees and look forward to a smooth transition upon approval. I wanted to once again thank the Risk Management Department for the work that they did on behalf of all of our employees in our district. Thank you for your consideration and the recommendation for approval of Etna as the administrator of our health insurance plan.
Do you have any questions, members? Ms. Lerner?
I know we're almost at the time for the.
I went over and spoke with the attorney, and he said I can do a few minutes, so.
Yeah. There were some issues related to this that I think I got most of my answers from Mr. Kopersky and others. Aon labeled this as a, I want to be sure I'm saying it right, intent to negotiate, a competitive negotiation. They labeled what it was called incorrectly, but the whole process was direct negotiation. I was trying to understand all of that, because Linda Balcom, I'm familiar with RFPs and everything that goes through with that. So that was one issue. And as Mr. Kopersky explained, because we are now self-insured, you can do it by the direct negotiation, and under that, it's not the same sunshine law provisions that the intent to competitively negotiate, it gets a little complicated. Now, you said proprietary, that you as staff had the chance to look at these algorithms or whatever you want to call it, correct?
We were able to review the results provided to us from Aon.
Right. I mean, I understand the question, even though all of this doesn't have to be given to the public or the board, but I wanted to be more sure that it really was a competitive bid, no matter what it was called. And I believe I've been assured that. I still have some questions. I want to be sure that all the potential vendors got that chance.
Ms. Kopersky, I'm not sure. It's you?
And maybe Aon can answer some of that, or Mr. Kopersky?
Sure. With respect to the legal issues, and I've had conversations with most of the board members, and there was a vendor that raised not only legal, but other non-legal issues with this procurement. In a very straightforward manner, we can procure either through a formal competitive solicitation, which if we were procuring a fully insured healthcare plan, that is what we would need to do. And you are correct, Mrs. Lerner, because we are self-insured, all we are procuring is the third-party administrator services of our self-insured plan. In fact, Hillsborough County, which was mentioned by one of the speakers, is a fully insured health insurance plan, and so there might be a different outcome in that case. We're self-insured, we can use direct negotiations. What was released was entitled an intent to negotiation, an intent to negotiate, actually the formal term of a competitive solicitation is invitation to negotiate. That being said, the sunshine concerns, the public meeting, the public records issues, I am confident in my legal opinion that we have not violated those laws, because this did not need to be, nor was it, a competitive solicitation. Pinellas County Schools knows how to do a competitive solicitation. Ms. Balcom does them very well. We follow the procedures to a T. We did not follow any of those procedures. Just because something was called something doesn't turn it into a formal competitive solicitation.
I guess at the workshop, I would have appreciated knowing this from Aon, that the title was incorrect, even though the process was obviously the one that we can At the workshop, I and others have felt Humana had provided really good service, and I just wanted to be assured that they were given the fair chance. It gets complicated where it was the initial bid, or whatever we want to call it, then somehow, Aon went back and the district to Humana again, and they submitted a second proposal. But I heard it said that when it was all looked at, they went back to the initial proposal. I am going to support the item. However, I have concerns about a lot of the things that occurred. I think staff definitely did look at everything. I'd like Aon to just make some kind of statement that everything they did was to get the most competitive offer, proposal.
I'm Lori Penley with Aon. Can you speak? Sure, I knew that was going to happen.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but maybe I do.
No, no, that's okay, that's fine. So we do have, whenever we take anything out to market, we do have a process that we follow, and we are very fair, and we make sure that we're only using the facts to present to the client, so that you have the best proposals from all of the vendors, and then we can negotiate as well on top of that.
Can you explain the part of the second meeting with Humana and the proposal that was given by them after the initial proposal?
So I believe that Humana requested.
Right.
That they be given another opportunity. And so, we shared with them some of the areas in which we felt their proposal was not as strong, and they did come back. Some things they were able to change, and other things they weren't able to change. So in the end, the Etna proposal was still the strongest proposal.
Okay. I know I'm getting the details, but Humana did say that when it was all looked at, that only the initial proposal was kind of looked at, not the secondary one.
So I think they're, they may be looking at the savings that we're showing, that were presented today, were from the initial renewal to the final renewal, and I think that's what they may be referring to. I'm not exactly sure.
And I guess, I think the board needs to know more about how Aon works and more of that kind of information. I've been, there's been a lot of changes. I will support the item. I think Humana provided us very good service and very good insurance. And I would have tried as best to get the information to let them continue, but I think I have enough information, and you're assuring me, that Etna was the most competitive bid, even though I may not understand all the details of it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. So for the 45% reduction, 45% staying at the same level, the additional 10%, were they able to break down that 10% if that would be an increase for any of those persons?
Those will be an increase in any, in any given year. Every year, we have a change in the, in the, in the levels. So any given year, there's a 10% up-down that could go with that. So there are 10%, and we have that broken down. We've actually had that discussion about what those, those areas would be, and so we do know those.
Okay. Maybe at some point later, you can just kind of provide us with some of that information so we can see whether, I would like to see what the variables are. And I just want to say, I understand what Ms. Lerner is saying, because I deal with the grant world, and so there are differences between RFQs, RFPs, ITNs, and how those are handled, and they do have different protocols in them. But I also know that when you have, we're saying third-party administrator, I say broker, because that person is doing the bidding for you in between, and their job is to get you the best plan possible for the least amount of money, and so that we can realize those savings. So it does get to be a little tricky sometimes when you're negotiating, but, and Ms. Lerner, I like Humana too, you know, good insurance, but in the end, we want to do what's best for our teachers while we're continuing. Our teachers and our staff, support staff, administrators, leadership team, everybody. Because if we're not able to increase you through your salary, certainly through your benefits, that proves as an additional support, an additional attractor for why persons, you know, would want to come and remain with our district. And so, it's really important to me, you all have heard me say it a number of times, based on my past health scares, it's so important to me. You know what I'm always looking at? What cost savings? How are the pharmaceuticals going? What are the referral service processes outside of network, those kinds of things? So I understand, I could sense the concern, but I am going to support Etna as our new administrator.
And that's something we do look at. We look at our total compensation package for our employees, and so it's all rolling together, and this is part of it, so.
So, we do have a motion with a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So we are going to go ahead and move on to our budget hearing. We will recess, because we still have some things to follow on our regular agenda, but we want to make sure that we're moving forward with our, can we do a two-minute short break? Okay, how about five? I think five. We're going to do a five-minute short break before we start our budget hearing.